Alvin City Council, order on the 29th of January. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, to remind everybody to please turn off or at least silence your cellphone if you have one. And I have done that. If it goes off, that's because it's haunted. Councilman Smith, would you please lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Your honor, we know there's a flag flying in front of City Hall, so...
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Snyder, would you please call a row?
Councilmember Clark, Reed, here.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Spicer.
Here.
Williamson.
Here.
Mayor Atchison.
Here.
And Councilwoman Clark advised me she is going to be late, hopefully will be here this evening later. Okay, first item is, has been a bit of discussion is the waste refuse contract, that is what we're here to discuss tonight. And we're going to open with public comments. And first, I want to thank every member of the public that are here, city employees that are here, my colleagues on council, appreciate it, and our city attorney. So this is the opportunity, or one opportunity, for members of the public to communicate directly with us and the city manager, what you like, what you don't like on the waste. So with that, do we have any money that wishes to make a public statement this evening?
Do I have to say it? Because it's hard...
No, you can sit there, but just tell us what your name is.
Okay. Thank you. Margaret Powell, 116 West Pine Street. I'm very happy with the service I have been getting from Granger. And I have communicated to several of my friends and neighbors that when the city switched over to the one waste pickup, that my bill has gone down. And like I said, the service has been excellent. And whenever I called them on the phone, they were very professional. They were prompt, and if I had got a recording, they promptly called me back the same day and helpful and everything. So I like it.
Thank you.
Karen Yankee, want a bottle of wine? I'll drink it. I really liked Granger, too. I have no problem with it. I just want to see the annual pickup brought back. And then when I had mentioned this two years ago, a lot of people told me they wanted the trash curbside pickup brought back, just the one day deal. So I'm just...
Like, what about it?
Yeah. People loved it, like we used to do. It was one day a week on Sa...
You didn't use?
Yeah. We were gonna put it out there. It was a Saturday, they were gonna have a Saturday pickup. But in the meantime, people would put their trash out prior to that. And it was just like a scavenger hunt for people.
Yep, but it wasn't... Can I say something? It was... Juanita Solis, Peter, Paul, we have an Edward. But it wasn't really trash. Trash was in the garbage.
Yes.
It was your unwanted things.
Yes, furniture, lamps.
Considerable.
Yeah, it wasn't trash, it should've been.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just want to clarify about...
Yeah, I have to buy you something.
Yeah, they specifically said no trash.
Right.
But it was unwanted things. You got rid of furniture and things like that that you didn't want.
Ms. Branson.
And for all the years I've been around and saw the different carriers, I will, you know, whatever... Oh, by the way, 408 Washington Street, Allen.
We think she knows.
She knows.
I'm sorry.
But anyway, I would say this is an excellent company. And they will, you know, they'll say, well, they'll take six bags. And I've seen them where they have come from even mine, I've seen them might have eight in there, because you can't, windows, leaves come down. And I didn't have a problem with their building, sometimes they did, sometimes they didn't, you know, for the extra. But they're prompt, courteous. And one thing I want to say, too, about that, annual new pickup, or the annual trash, I noticed that when they go to some street, some residence, they'll clean it up, two days later, it's loaded again. It's like somebody bringing their trash to Alvin, weird taking it away. So I like the way you dropped off, just because of that.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Weeks.
Lady Williams, 917 Luther Drive. I'm okay with Granger, too. I have no problems. I just have two concerns. One of them is, I'm by myself, I have a 90 gallon can. I don't want to take it out once a month. I've got enough to go with it. I don't need to do it twice a year. And the other thing, it doesn't pertain to me, but I know a lot of them go south, and they're still charged. And those who live on these two nights, I wonder if something...
Thank you.
Just a quick thing on the, when you go to the people that go south for the winter, if you contact Granger, they do what's called vacation mode, and they will actually stop it until you come back and restart it. So you do have an option to place that hold on until you're vacationing out of there. So, just to...
That's good to know. It's not public services. It's a little...
Thank you. Any more public comments this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I need to, Pine Street, Laido Farm, North Monroe Street. And I also like right here, I like their leaf pickup, the way they do it, because I seem like it was more work the other way. In this way, it's a lot less work for me. And as far as the garbage and everything, they're always prompt and like to have questions. Like everybody said, they're really nice on the phone, that makes a lot of difference. If I have any questions, I call them, and they're always giving me whatever answers I need.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm Sheldon, and my little Saint Anthony's, 417 North Monroe Street, Alvin. I second everything that she said.
Thank you, Juanita. I was just clarifying the trash, you know. But I'm also happy with the Granger, you know, like Margaret says, they're, you know exactly when they're coming, that hour, you can almost set your clock, you know, as what time they're gonna take it out. And when they, when they put out leaves, you don't always have to use those bags, because I have two big trash totes, and, you know, it's okay. And I put up a sign on it that says yard waste, and they got those, and like I hear them coming, and I go out there, and I tell them thank you, and they're always yes, ma'am, and, you know, and they're nice people that come and pick up yard waste and garbage. I'm very happy with that.
Any more public comments? Yes, Ms. Weeks.
Lady Williams, 917 Luther... One other thing I thought I would go ahead and say, even if it's a holiday, well, it's not a holiday, when we had, when they were working on her when they had the questions and it couldn't get to us, they were nice enough to call and say, we're not going to be able to get your garbage today or tomorrow. And I thought that was superb. They were...
Comments, questions, discussion by council. Councilwoman Hall.
Thank you. My only concern is, which has been expressed tonight, and good information about the vacation mode. My concern is the snow or sunbirds, the veterans and the senior citizens. I think we should do something to accommodate them, our veterans, they deserve whatever they need. Our senior citizens, you know, like was mentioned, it may be only a husband or a wife in a household, and they don't need, you know, a lot of pickup. I know in Leslie, a couple of years back, I was asking for senior citizens to be charged, like maybe $2 a bag a week, just guessing how much trash they may have. And he told me that we couldn't do it, but they were doing it in Leslie. So I just thought they gave us some information that wasn't true, but I think we should do something for our senior citizens, our veterans, and our snow and sunbirds.
So if something was done, it gave them a lower rate, but in return, you raise the rates on the rest of the residents, we just don't want to do that. Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. I just want to add that I think we're probably going to consider recycling as a part of, I think we have a part of this waste refuse contract, because if I'm correct, our recycling center is no longer going to exist as of May 30th, 31st? I'm sorry, March 31st. So I just want to keep in mind that, about that, you know, about the cost. We have a good price with, for our waste, our garbage waste service right now, and I don't want to see that increase, you know, too much more if we do include recycling with this contract. And the other thing I want, because if we're giving discounts for, you know, seniors and other people, I understand the cost could continue to go up, but I just want us to keep in mind that we don't want to be charging people in outrageous. And if we do include recycling, I would like us to consider possibly an opt-out option for residents, because now our residents recycle. But for some, for those that do, that would be great. And the other thing, too, is I believe Granger charges the same price for the 90 gallon receptacles as the 64. And so this is probably leaning to the seniors and single individuals. Perhaps we could, in our contract, negotiate a lower rate for individuals, single individuals or the people that need the smaller container. Just my FYI, my thinking.
City manager, from the third, would you comment, clarify the status of the recycle that we have, John McHale.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So after meeting with the county in early December, they indicated to us that they had several concerns with the existing recycling drop-off center. The condition of the building, they're concerned about the safety of their employees that work at the building, the lack of bathroom facilities and lack of access to the fire department to use their bathroom facilities. Those were the main concerns that they had. But it was clear during our discussions that the county, the county's desire was to get out of the local recycling drop-off center services that are currently provided. I don't know if there were other considerations that they had, whether it's cost or what have you, that may be a consideration for them. But it was clear that their interest is in getting out of the contract, out of our contract that we have with them to share in the cost of the local recycling drop-off center. At that time, we also indicated to them that our rubbish collection contract was coming up for renewal, that that was a good time for us to discuss these concerns, because if the community decided that we wanted to continue recycling collection services, we would need to address that as part of our rubbish collection contract. So at this point, the recommendation that I will be making to the city council when this comes back to the council next Monday, is that we include in our RFP, our request for proposals from rubbish collection companies, is that we include an alternate as part of the bid process for pricing for curbside recycling collection, to see what those costs are, and then we can have further discussions on whether it's something we can accommodate, whether it's something that would be affordable for residents. I would also like to look at the solid waste millage that we levy for residents and see if maybe the city can pick up some of those costs for the recycling collection services to offset the cost to residents through the fees that you pay directly to Granger. So there's several options that we can look at and have further discussion on, once we get the bids back from the companies, and to determine whether we can move forward with that option.
Councilwoman...
Okay, side of a couple of concerns, and this is actually one of them. The first, the first one is I would like to see leaf pickups come back to at least one time in the fall. I know it's something I hear all over town, that was, it's very convenient, people are still pushing their leaves out to the street, no matter what, anyway, it seems. It's a trash hire right in the fall when that stuff happens. So I think the city needs to address that. I think many residents, as you heard tonight, but others that we've spoken to, really have the feeling, are very happy with the Granger service. I know that I've heard things like the city's have a negative since each event. We go, "Oh, Lord." And so that, so I think we're, I think we're on our track with Granger. The next concern was the bid process, and has there been discussions with Granger about continuing forward their contract and what modifications they can make to it?
We did have a meeting with them, and we do have the option of negotiating with them on an extension of their contract. So that is something if the council, and that's one of the things that I was looking for direction from the council on next Monday, was whether we wanted to look at bidding out services, whether we wanted to try to negotiate an extension of the contract with Granger. It sounds like citizens are very happy with Granger's services, so that is an option we can look at, and maybe at the same time, try to negotiate some alternates to get pricing. One of the things that Granger indicated to me was if we extended their contract, they indicated that curbside recycling services using the Blue Bag system would amount to only a 20 cent, I believe they said 20 cents per month increase.
I'm sorry, I don't know, but I just doesn't, because the council hasn't decided whether or not they're going to bid or renew the contract. You probably don't want to put prices out there.
Thank you. But, but it would, they indicated it would be very reasonable, so...
Because I'm concerned is if we go through a bid process and you're already, you've already, it's seen a positive, seemingly positive conversation with Granger about a number of issues related to power of service, that if we put it out to bid, we basically flushed out our current servicer, and so even they can come back with a bid much higher than what we have if we were to negotiate them quietly, if that's what the council wants to do, is to do with Granger. So I'm concerned that they would come back with a higher bid if we put them back out for bidding processes, others. They were clearly the best bid last time around by far by a lot. And if residents are happy with the service, if we could negotiate some decent people were talking about, maybe we're not going to win all of them all, but if we could, if we could get something that's a little bit better, and maybe with a very minimal increase to cost, that would be better than having a drastic increase with the bidding process. And the other thing I want to add was the recycling center, I have a really big concern about where we're going with the recycling center and with the county's decision to close Alvin's Recycling Center versus everywhere else's. So I have a couple of concerns that we aren't at Alvin at City Hall, actually holding up our end of the bargain with the county, which is why they're probably frustrated with us with what we agreed to do. Or maybe we are, and they're just unhappy with the conditions of where this recycling center is at. But I know that as a future center of citizens, they would not just, not let to see the recycling center go at the moment, at least in its current form, and we're not going to have curbside recycling for sure. And then with curbside recycling, one of the things I know that we need to be careful of is if we're throwing all the bags into one bin, because the way I understand Blue Bags service is it all goes in the same truck, and then it's supposedly get separated out. I would want to hear more from the company about, like, assurances, because we know of some companies that would just bug all the way.
And they did say to us, they said they can provide assurances that the Blue Bag system, yes, it all goes under one truck, but it is properly sorted at their transfer facility, and then the Blue Bags are shipped up to their former city facility, the recycling facility up in Traverse City. But they said they could provide assurances on that.
Really concerned about a big increase in costs to the residents, so I want to keep those in mind.
I do, I do want to be clear that even if we negotiate with, with Granger, they've indicated that it won't be the same rates, there will be an increase in costs. You know, it's, prices of doing business do go up, their costs go up. So there will be an increase in rates regardless. But going back to your comment about the county, the county did not indicate to us that we were not fulfilling the terms of our contract with them. Their concern was from the, was with the condition of the building, safety of their employees, and lack of access to bathroom facilities. So, you know, there is a cost, and it could be substantial, to try to meet those needs if we were to want to try to keep the recycling drop-off center. My recommendation to the city council would be that we look at what the costs are for curbside recycling, and then we can have further discussions on whether it makes sense to migrate to that type of service, or whether we want to make an investment in making whatever improvements to the building we need to make, providing bathroom facilities, whether it's having further discussions with the fire department on how we can make that at their building next door, or if we have to look at something else. But I think the first step would be seeing exactly what the cost for curbside recycling would be. I think it makes it much more convenient for residents if we can provide that service cost-effectively. I think it would also increase participation in recycling. So, so I think it's a step towards us. I do share your concerns about the recycling drop-off centers, so I think we need to have further discussions in that regard.
Councilwoman Marie.
I've had at least three calls from people that did not want to recycle, and so I was, I told them the reason, why it was going like that. And some suggestions was, for like on days when it rains or something like that, when they need some, someplace to be, that you could buy one of those, what, patio houses, whatever you call them, those little things that you put in your yards, and also a port five. But I find that to be very convenient, and hopefully, we, you know, I know we probably will lose it, but I think that's convenient, they keep it nice and clean down there, and the stuff all picked up, and it would be nice if it would be, you know, I don't know why. And is Alvin the only city that suggested that for you? Were they the only city?
I believe so, and it's, it's because of the conditions at that facility. Now, my understanding is the number of facilities that they have throughout the county, there's, there's a small list of drop-off sites to begin with, and I think the Bedford one has closed. And then Clarence Township has their facility, but I think they only have Saturday drop-off services. Marshall, and then I think you can, you can take your materials to C and C. I looked at Shane, because Shane I think has, but I think those are the only facilities in the entire county where they have recycling drop-off services. So it's a very limited list to begin with. I'm sorry?
And they still be functioning?
My understanding is that those other facilities, other than Bedford, that has closed, from what I understand, the other facilities, to the best of my knowledge, would continue to be available.
Well, if, if there was some way that you could provide bathroom service, and what else do they, were they saying?
They're concerned about the roof of the...
The building across the street?
It's, it's in bad shape, and they're concerned about the safety of their employees.
Councilwoman...
Actually, Ms. Spicer, she's already exposed to you.
It's a little bit, actually.
Parliamentary, okay, thank you. A number of my constituents are here this evening, and they have expressed to me in emails and phone calls, yes, they are happy with Granger's regular trash service, no problem there at all. The only one I've heard that might have something is that, probably, a lot of us have, we have one bag of trash a week, and we've got a 90 gallon container, the Hall of Kirk. Some people would like to see a smaller container, a differential in price for them. Just something I wanted to throw out there. Also, there are more options than just curbside recycling. My wife and I come from a community in that state down south, Ohio, that they brought, they brought in a monstrous compartmentalized dumpster every week, and set it down, and it had holes in it, and you would go up with your plastics in one, your papers in another, your glass in another. That is an option, it's just not somebody taking it out of your car for you. I mean, it's not a valet service, it's recycling, for crying out loud. And the gentleman over here doesn't seem to be too happy about his job, anyway. And as far as leaf pickup, I've heard the mayor mention before, I don't know if anybody else was listening at the time, right now, Granger says six bags per household per week. Well, not everyone in the city uses that service, but everybody gets charged for it. So he had mentioned an idea, instead of six bags per household, how about a larger number citywide? And that way, those who are putting out more than six, eight, 10, whatever it may be, for the large yards, they're not getting slapped for extra bags, and the people who aren't putting out anything are still paying for no service that they're using. So I thought that was a very good idea. That's, that's what I'm looking at at this point. There are other, other options other than curbside recycling.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. I have two questions, I just have got. Attorney Hartness somewhat questioned the city manager about pricing, because, because of the contract that we haven't, that we don't, that we won't have, and they go to a bidding process. So I'm wondering, do we, can, do we have to do an RFP?
No.
We don't have to?
You can, you have an option in the contract to renew it on terms that would be negotiated between the council and Granger. But what I would suggest is, the council needs to decide whether you're going to renew with Granger, or whether you're going to do the RFP, because once you, you don't want to go down the road with Granger, start those negotiations, get their numbers, and then say, ah, we don't like that, we're going to go bid it out. If you're going to go down that road, then you can go down that road, or you go the RFP road. But you are certainly within your right to just renew the contract that's been built into the contract language.
I, I think I was saying, I was looking at the Granger services here, and because I'm so happy with them, that's why I was referring to, we could have a 96 gallon or 96 gallon or 64, because I'm happy with their service and kind of leaning toward, you know, my personal standing there. But my other thought is, in terms of recycling, since we now contribute funds to, or paid for recycling through the county, is that correct? We pay $7,000. Could, could that might be, I think you might have alluded to that, used to... Could, could that might be, I think you might have alluded to that, used to offset the cost of recycling?
That's what I'm hoping.
Or maybe to pay for it entirely, depending on what we put in the contract?
That is also what I'm hoping.
Okay.
We are, as part of our recommendations to the city council, and part of our analysis, and we get this back, is we are going to be looking at the solid waste millage fund, looking at how it's performing currently, because I know in the past we have had problems with that fund where we were operating at a budget shortfall. For the past couple of years at least, we have been operating at a surplus, so the, the fund reserves have been building in that fund. So if that trend continues, we do have some, we do have some leeway in working out, maybe subsidizing the, the curbside recycling collection services. We would need to know what that cost is under the new contract before we can have intelligent conversations about that. But I would like to try to utilize the solid waste collection fund as much as we can to benefit residents, keep their costs as low as we can, and still meet the other needs that we have for that fund. But we also have to make sure that we are spending those millage funds in a way that is appropriate and in accordance with state law for the use of those funds, and we will be looking at that closely.
That's one of the reasons. Thank you.
I just want to show my support for staying away from a bidding process and moving forward with Granger and contract negotiations. And I hope other council members will make clear whether they feel that that's the best way to move forward. In my mind, even all the special candidates, that sounds probably like the best way to know, considering this is ahead of their service, and maybe there's changes that can be made in the negotiation process. But I would, but I would hope that the colleagues would want to move in that direction. And then the other concern I have, just, hopefully we can get curbside recycling. I think curbside recycling would be much more convenient than the recycling center itself. I know that the, what Councilwoman Smith was talking about, we had that before. It was back in one of these locations here, and it was just a trash pit, and it was a dumping ground. It, it turned out to be a really big mess in our community, and so it didn't work. And that's what moves us to recycling center model here in Albion. And this is, again, like, I think Councilwoman Marie was mentioning about how clean it was. And that's, that's been a problem here. So I'd like for recycling center, my concern is that we have a dilapidated building that the ADA owns, I think, right? Is, I'm concerned, well, why do we just let the dilapidated buildings that there if it is? If the Albion building authority has ownership of it, but are they fixing it? Is there money in there? If it needs a roof, like what's going on? So, who is in charge of the ADA, needs to be asked what their plan is for that. I know that, I remember that they're in a mood to sell off their buildings, then we property holders, that's fine. But you fix your stuff up so it doesn't be so gross and interactive in the community. So if that's the case, and I think it's that little like shack looking thing across the street from where you drop off your recycling stuff. So I would want to know what's going on in ADA to make sure that that's getting fixed, because it's still an asset, usually people are going to have bad assets, so we do all the time. So that's just another concern I have.
Question for code enforcement. There was an outlandish attempt at being, there was a statement or inference that the city's never looked better since we've got a single hauler. So I would ask code enforcement, do you agree that things have gotten better?
Myself, in the time that we've had, even before Lindsay, definitely it's worked out much better in a number of ways, even on, even on the township, their homes. It used to be you'd drive out of town when we had the separate haulers. It didn't really matter which way you went, if you went in some of the back roads, you'd run across bags and bags of garbage that had just been dumped. And it has really changed the amount of garbage we have to deal with and citing, we still do, but it's been extremely helpful for that to be there. The other thing to take into consideration too with the one hauler is you had one truck on the road in four or five weeks. And that also, when you have their weight, you know, it doesn't sound like much, but that also helps, helps the deterioration of streets. And streets that are basically not supposed to have anything over fifty-five hundred pounds, so. Yeah, it's been beneficial.
Director Tracy was saying that having a single waste hauler reduces the heavy truck traffic on our streets, which in and of themselves are in great need of improvement. But further, by having three or four waste haulers coming throughout our community all week long, it, it definitely has a huge adverse impact on the streets. It, also the single waste hauler has greatly improved the aesthetics of the community, reduced the amount of trash, illegal dumping we've seen. Did I kind of cover it for you?
Definitely.
So, so it's definitely benefits since we've gone to a single waste hauler system. And the other thing is cost, it has reduced the cost for most residents versus having to contract on your own for services.
It makes it easier in our department in general, just because we're able to directly get ahold of Granger, because we know everybody's, well, if you're a one-family dwelling or two-family, two families, you have to have it. So I'm able to track down through the government, get trash service much easier when we're with a one hauler. It makes it, they're able to send over a list of people that are inactive. It's, it's one of those bills that are easy to look over, because it's a very minimal amount every three months. It makes it easy for some individuals to pay the year of the fraud, because it's base rate, and just be done with it for the year. We, I've noticed a lot of, I don't have to cite as many people as far as garbage wise, now that there is something in place for it, so.
You still have some individuals, it doesn't matter what you have, okay, we'll pick up here and have some problems. But the problems we had before with multiple haulers, only with one hauler for one, two families is tremendous difference, tremendous difference. One of the things, I know for a while we had some problems where people either totes off towards the street or as such, and they still go across periodically. But one of the things that's nice is when you go down the street, you may go down the street once a day, seven days a week, and typically you only see a tipper of, you know, a container out there once, or maybe two days out of the week, rather than continuously, where you have different companies and there are different days, and you always have stuff at the street. Repetitive, you know, repeatedly all the time, so that's made a big difference in our, in our appearances too, so.
I've noticed and get the impression that there are at least a couple of questions or additional comments from the audience. If there's no objection to any member on council, I'd like to provide our residency opportunity to ask a question or make a statement. Does anybody have an issue with that?
So.
What?
Okay.
Is that one of the calls?
Ms. Kier.
Well, I just had, we used to, what Mr. Smith was saying about, and she already said, when you had that one where you just voluntarily take things over there, everything. But, but at one time, we had the recycling up there on Twenty-Seven Mile Road, where the, where the parks department keeps their trucks and everything. There's bathrooms there that can get out of the weather. Isn't it Twenty-Seven Mile Road where the county commission was at?
Yes.
County commission was at. We had the recycling over there at one time, the county recycling. Yeah, because I used to take it over there. It was, it was that self-serve stuff, but there's a building there, there's bathrooms, that's an idea.
I'm going to boil this down and see if this is, if I'm following council positions and what they're indicating. And if I'm getting, if I get it wrong for anybody, please let me know. It sounds as though everybody is from the community and on council are relatively happy with the current service provider, Granger. It sounds as though curbside pickup of recycling materials would be of great interest, would increase, perhaps increase participation and make it easier on the residents. We would like to have, return to having a full leaf pickup curbside. And it appears that the general consensus is to go down the path of renegotiating the terms with the existing contract as part of extending it. Is there anybody on council that sees it or feels differently?
I feel different.
Okay, okay.
Can you add to the option to opt out for the, check with that tool for the recycle center in case people want to opt out of the curbside? And as far as like the RFP, my only concern about that is we may never know if it's somebody else that's cheaper, which I love Granger, don't get me wrong, but I just don't want to just have one person give us a price and they not have competition.
And that is the trade-off. If we, anytime that we decide that we're going to renegotiate a contract with our existing contractor, it is a trade-off, because you don't know whether the new prices you're going to get are competitive or not in the current market. And so, because I thought about this on both sides, do we want to try to renegotiate with Granger and extend the contract? Are we better off going out for bid, inviting Granger to bid on the service again, and see where they compare with the other companies? But then the concern comes in, okay, since we're having them go out to rebid this, are they, are they going to then increase the rates more than they would increase them if we negotiated with them? So it is, it is a trade-off there, and, and there's no easy answer to it. I think you, unless there's good justification, if we were to negotiate, renegotiate with them on a new contract, other than an inflationary rate increase, they would really have to explain and justify why their prices would increase by something other than the rate of inflation, I would feel, if I was, if I was going to be the one negotiating with them. So I would look at something close to an inflationary increase in the rates, and then get pricing on some of these other things that they don't currently provide, but we'd want to get some pricing on. So, so that's how I would approach negotiating with them if the council decides that that's the way you want to go.
To the attorney department. So I was going to add to what the city manager just said, to the Councilwoman Lawler's concern is, what I would suggest is, I mean, if everyone, if, if Councilwoman Lawler's concern is a valid one, and that there always is a concern as to whether or not you're going to constantly get locked into this one entity that is going to up the, up the price, up the pricing, you never know what else is out there. What I would suggest the council is, there's certainly nothing wrong with renewing for another contract cycle or even another two contract cycles, but at some point, you do want to make sure that you do the bid process to keep it competitive for that very reason that Councilwoman Lawler's out there, because you want to make sure that you are keeping the price competitive. But, but I want to say to council on that, on that same note, you don't need to bid this, you sort of can bid this out every contract cycle, but it, it's very, very common for these contracts to be renewed for two cycles or three cycles, and then bid it out just to keep it competitive. So, you know, so my suggestion would be, if you do renew, great, you can do it once, you can do it twice, but at some point, you need to make sure that you do bid it out to keep it competitive.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. So I understand that the contract with Granger expires March the first. So in your estimation, if we were to do a bidding process, how long could that take? And what would happen if it took longer than the deadline, than the deadline with Granger? Could they extend it for a month, can we go to a month by month, or can you please do something?
We, we could negotiate with them for an extension for a number of months until we finish the process.
If we did, okay.
So, yes, that's always enough.
Okay. That was my concern.
Councilwoman Lawler.
Could you write out maybe the option to have a smaller container? Because like the three categories I was concerned about, the smaller container would definitely help our seniors. The vacation home would definitely help our vacationing birds. And so I haven't heard too much about our veterans, we have to include some people for our veterans. They, they, they deserve to get some type of incentive.
So I'll come back and ask the same question, if I can get some input back. Having these different categories with lower rates, is that the preference, or is that still being supported if the other rates go up and the overall cost to the community would go up? Would you still want to have lower rates for veterans, lower rates for seniors?
So if we.
Councilwoman Lawler.
So if we were to, I wouldn't have a problem with it if we had like the city, like you were suggesting, that the city paid for it and we could get it backed some other kind of way. I may not be saying it right, but you were saying like to have the city pay for it, right, and then?
Recycling services, curbside recycling. There's no way our rubbish, our solid waste millage fund could pay for, could subsidize the entire service. But what I, my idea was, if we're looking at adding curbside recycling services, at least for this next contract, we could look at subsidizing those services, reducing the cost of residents by subsidizing it through the solid waste millage fund, some of the solid waste taxes that we pay.
So maybe we can just try to work it out and see what would actually be the cost if we do have something like that.
Right, but I, I understand that, and I don't know that anybody would object to having lower rates for seniors or veterans if the overall cost to the community, to the other residents, did not go up any appreciable amount. But I still come back to the question is, if we look at everything, and run the figures, and look at where we can subsidize some things, and in the end, in order to have the different rates, it's going to cost those that are not veterans and those that are not seniors a certain percentage, and maybe that's twenty-five percent, I don't know what it would be. Would you still want to have different levels of cheaper rate for seniors, cheaper rate for veterans, if that means all the rest of the residents are going to pay more? That's, that's the question.
Councilwoman Spicer.
Thank you. I, while I support, or could support, a lower solid waste charge for a smaller receptacle, I guess I'm just curious about seniors. Ninety percent of Albion is a senior. I mean, so, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm exaggerating, but really, so, so, but not, so they would get, I don't know. I, I don't know, I guess we're kind of, that's something to think about.
I'm guessing as far as the lower containers, and there was something in the current contract, they have a big one, and then they got a smaller one, it's, it's like a third smaller, the cost is still the same.
Right.
And I'm, I'm guessing, to be honest, that the, the, just like every other industry, the highest cost is the labor, and it doesn't really save them labor if they still got to go out and do it. So there might be a slight reduction. And I was thinking exactly along the same lines, if we're going to lower the rates for seniors, which is at least half of the homes, then the other half are going to definitely go up. And I'm a veteran, I, I spent twenty-seven years, I'm a disabled veteran. And I do not think I need to get a lower rate, because I serve my country. I know some people do.
Councilwoman Lee, say.
Okay, so, what I'm, I'm trying to say is that when you think about what we had before we had single hauler, many people were paying twice the rate that they're paying now for Granger to have haul their garbage, which means effectively we're all paying a snowbird rate for a snowbird rate from before we had it. So we've all seen huge, a huge discount and a huge benefit by having single haulers. So I admire the discussion about heads and tiers for veterans and seniors, but really we have. we have drastically decreased the cost to residents already just by having a single hauler. And so to do it even more would then get us into the prickly patch of who's going to pay more and who's going to pay less, when it seems pretty equitable across the board now as it is. So that, that's what I want to caution everyone on council to consider moving forward.
Councilwoman Spicer?
I just wanted to be sure that it's understood, I know what the city manager has suggested as far as going through the millage program or paying for the recycling, please understand, and I've been fighting this with a lot of people on emails, there is no free lunch. You do not get free recycling. Even the recycling we have up to this point, our city pays seven thousand dollars a year for. So even if it's done through the millage, it will still be paid for through your taxes. But there is no free recycling, there is no free lunch, it will be paid for one way or the other.
Any other comments by council?
I just want to let some of you know, it's just because I have, I'm constantly in contact with Granger, there are some options that I have come across now that a lot of people probably have no idea, like the vacation mode for the snowbirds, they offer elderly and disabled people to leave their trash can up by their house, and they will actually come to the house, pick it up, and then dump it, and bring it back to the side of the house for them. There is, we questioned at one point, because I had, I've had some people come to me about, you know, this is kind of ridiculous, I have one bag a month type thing. They do, I know it's not part of our contract that we're in, but they do offer the bag, like Marco was talking about, the bag by the road, it's just not in our contract for them to do it here, I don't know if that's something that I could, you know, you guys could discuss, but the, some of the things that they do offer, lawn service that we currently have, somehow elderly people say, no, I'm paying for something that I can't even go out my yard and work and do, so I don't want that something, that maybe option we talked about to be added on by the person. So if the person chooses to add the lawn service, then they pay for it. But there's a lot of options that Granger does offer out there, just popping to them on a, on a daily basis, I don't know about, so.
Any other comments by council? Councilwoman Spicer?
Thank you, I think it's my last comment. I just want to say that while an RFP would be nice, I think that negotiations with Granger should probably proceed, because pretty much we're happy to satisfy them. If negotiations should proceed, it's just negotiations, we're not committed to anything. If they come back and prices don't meet our like, we could, at some point, say, we could do an RFP. We're not, we wouldn't be held to any, how to spell that?
Do you agree? Well, the problem with doing that, though, is, is if you do an RFP after you've gone through negotiations with Granger, you basically put Granger at a disadvantage for participating in the RFP, because you know their numbers, their numbers may get publicized as part of council meetings, and so then the bidding process is no longer fair for them. So that's why I say, either you go down the process, you renegotiate with Granger, or you do the RFP, but doing one and then the others, it, it's going to leave at least one company at a disadvantage.
Then, I, I think you had words on that I absolutely agreed with, things go up over time, and so when, if and when we proceed with a negotiation with Granger, and they come back and the rates have gone up more than inflation, and for basically the same service, or they come back, we negotiate, and they say, okay, this is what it is, and they go, whoa, nah, we'll renew the contract as is, factor in some modest inflation rate, if, I would believe that if they would take, in my opinion, a reasonable position, no, you're stuck with me now that you've started this, otherwise it's not fair to me to compete, well, you have to be fair with us. So if we went down a negotiation, and it turned out, we thought that they were really raising the rates up and taking advantage of us, I think we have reasonable ground to stand on and go, no, we'll just, we'll just renew the contract as, as is, with those benefits, for another year, or whatever the period would have to be, and then as well with the RFP is what my recommendation would be. Any, okay. Any other comments by council?
One more, just one more thing. If the council does decide on Monday that you want to direct me to negotiate with, with Granger, would you be open to the idea of looking at options? Currently, the contract is set up for a three-year contract, could I also ask them for pricing for a five-year contract, to see if there would be a reduction in cost by having a longer term contract? Not a, not a, an unreasonable term, but, but five years, I've seen a lot of five-year rubbish collection contracts, so that's not unreasonable, and they may be willing to give us a, a cost reduction if we're committed to them for a longer term. Would that be something that council would like me to look at as an option?
Okay. There's no other comments by council, to the attorney. One last opportunity for the public to ask a question or make a statement. Ms. French?
I think, heck, the building was so many, up, the city building was so many. I went back four years, and I looked at the bill. I looked at how they escalated with all the new haulers we had. I think we, as one of the seniors in the room, I love this bill. I mean, I'm serious, I mean, and, and, and to go out to me, to be this experience, to open up the door and say, okay, we want this, we want this, we want this. Some of us, not really, because everything else is going up, you know, wages, wages, everything that he's doing for us, to service us, supposing he doesn't want us, after looking at all of that. So I agree with the city manager. I would like to see us go a little longer on the contract, maybe with a few twerks.
Ms. Weeks?
I agree with Eddie, and everybody seems to like him, and the city manager can get a better deal going for five years, right now.
City manager report will be on Monday, I'll send you this, okay? Any council member have any other comments for this evening? I want to pass on, on behalf of Councilwoman Clark, that she has her next precinct one council meeting tomorrow night at Crowell School at 5:30 PM.
Crowell.
Crowell, thank you. And I'm sure that's how she pronounced it, and I did my phone. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay. Good work.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here, adjourn.